Calling to order the Monday, January 6, 2025, meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Good evening, Mayor Protem. I'm out of the body staff. I join you tonight. Terry Service here in Minneapolis, Minnesota. I was told I need to be specific, so I do want to say I'm here in Minneapolis, Minnesota, home of the second place in the NFC North and fifth overall seed in the NFC Minnesota Vikings. Was that specific enough, Attorney Chris?
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hunan.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
The first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Patterson. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we've now come to the portion of the meeting where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided on the table in the hallway just outside the door. Please direct your comments to the chair and refrain from cheering, booing, clapping, or speaking out of turn. You can speak to a specific agenda item when it's being considered, and when you come to the microphone, please state your name and your city of residence.
Cindy Coon. I'm actually going, I'd like to make a comment. And I know that charges have to be charged to the nonprofit groups in our city. And the fees have been, I guess, set. We, as the Berkeley Women's Club, rented the community center last month for our candy cannon and breakfast. And we spent, the rental fee was a thousand dollars for a community center we had. And I would love to see how we evaluate this funding. And on top of it, can we have it cleaned, at least cleaned, so that anybody, any resident that wants to rent it, at least the kitchen is cleaned, and that's all.
Thanks, Cindy. All right, seeing nobody else coming to the microphone, Ms. Mitchell, have we received any correspondence for public comment this evening?
No, we have not.
Thank you. Can you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, December 16, 2024, special city council meeting on Wednesday, December 18, 2024, and city council special work session on Wednesday, December 18, 2024. Two, proclamation number P125, matter of receiving a proclamation recognizing the 40th anniversary of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club. Three, proclamation number P225, matter proclaiming February 2025 as Black History Month.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Patterson. Are there any corrections or additions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, can you please call the roll?
Gavin.
Yes.
Hunan.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, can you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Vilani to read P0125.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protem Gavin. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan honoring the 40th anniversary of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club. Whereas, the Berkeley Junior Women's Club has been a cornerstone of our community, exemplifying dedication, service, and leadership since its founding in 1985. And whereas, the purpose upheld by the Berkeley Junior Women's Club is to develop and foster projects of civic betterment, promote leadership training and cooperative action among its members, reflect the highest ideals of civic responsibility, and serve as a shining example for all. And whereas, the members of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club have consistently demonstrated a commitment to improving the quality of life for residents of Berkeley through volunteerism, advocacy, and beloved city events, including the holiday tree lighting. And whereas, club members' strong work ethic and dedication to our community over many years have left a lasting positive impact on individuals and families in our city. And whereas, the members of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club have devoted countless hours of their time and energy to organizing events, raising funds, and providing resources to those in need, all while welcoming others to join them in the spirit of giving. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims: Section 1, the City of Berkeley formally recognizes and honors the outstanding contributions of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, celebrating members' invaluable work and the enduring legacy they continue to build. Section 2, the City extends its heartfelt gratitude to all past and present members of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club, acknowledging their tireless efforts in making our community a better place to live, work, and grow. Proclaimed this sixth day of January 2025 at a regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council.
I am Marcia Swayze, and on behalf of the Women's Club, I want to thank everyone for recognizing our 40th year. I was the original charter president back in 1985. And also here tonight is Linda Gussley. Stand up, Linda. She's an original member who's been in the club for 40 years also. Kristin Booth, stand up. She is our current president this year and one of our youngest members. She's only been a member for about three years and has already taken the leadership role. Standing next to her is Debbie Mesky, longtime resident, former city of Berkeley worker, and past president of the Berkeley Junior Women's Club for many, many years. Cindy Coon. Cindy has been such an important part of our club. She's been in the club for over 30 years. And when nobody else wants to be president, Cindy is the first to volunteer. We really appreciate her. And Suzanne Thede is a current member. She's been in the club for over 20 years, and she's our chaplain. She served in that position for quite a few years, so.
And I have the oldest living person in Berkeley, lives with me. So. Just in case you acclimated her back when she was 103.
Yep.
So thank you very much for recognizing our service to the city of Berkeley.
I also want to say that it's the Berkeley Junior Women's Club. But what we do is we just continue and we put it into our daughters and our friends' daughters. And pretty soon, they're all helping us, and pretty soon they're Chrissy, and then they're coming. And so, yeah, we always, we always have the numbers that come and they want to be members. And so, we're doing something right, I think.
Well, thank you all so very much, and everyone in the club. You do incredible work that really enhances the quality of life here in Berkeley. So thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
And I've asked Councilmember Black to read P0225.
Mayor Protem Gavin, a proclamation of the City, of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan proclaiming February 2025 as Black History Month. Whereas, Black History Month grew out of the establishment of Negro History Week in 1926 by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas, it became a month-long celebration in 1976. The month of February was chosen to coincide with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. And whereas, during Black History Month, we commemorate Black history and its cultural contributions to American life. And it is designed to recognize and pay tribute to the many contributions of African-Americans to the history, society, and culture of the United States of America. And whereas, Black History Month grants us an opportunity to recognize and honor the heroes of African-American history and celebrates the achievements of African-Americans in the arts, civil rights, education, entertainment, government, history, law, literature, medicine, military, music, politics, science, sports, and other endeavors. And whereas, the City of Berkeley continues to work toward becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas, the City of Berkeley is proud to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans in our community throughout the state and nation. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims: Section 1, that February 2025 shall be recognized as Black History Month in the City of Berkeley. Section 2, the City of Berkeley also calls upon the community to celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. Section 3, the City of Berkeley urges the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Berkeley to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Proclaim this sixth day of January 2025 at a regular meeting of the City of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Ms. Mitchell, can you please read item number two on tonight's regular agenda?
Presentation, matter of receiving a presentation from State Rep. Natalie Price.
Come on up. You're the main event tonight. Can you make sure too, you're close to the mics and make sure everybody's picking up.
I can also use my teacher voice.
There it is.
I don't even need a mic. No, I'm very, very excited to be here. This presentation has been prepared by our comms team, and I've done it in a few of my other cities, but this is the one that I was most excited to do. 2025 marks 10 years that my family has lived in Berkeley. And you will see that our comms team really loves using the word hometown. And I felt like a little bit of an imposter talking about my hometown, but 10 years with my kids, now 10 and 12, raising them here. The more I learn about my other communities and the rest of the state from other reps and senators, the more I realize how incredibly unique and important Berkeley is. We are a, really a jewel of this region and of the state, and I love sharing stories in Lansing about how great our city is. I bring Elwin Scones every time I host a breakfast. I think everybody there knows about the physical therapists, the trainers, the tea omens where I buy my tea, where I'm buying my holiday gifts because I'm so proud of our, our little hometown of Berkeley. And very, very happy to share it with everybody up in Lansing. I am here today to share our budget overview for the 2024-2025 budget. I do want to explain, though, we voted in the House, we passed this out of the House in June. Our fiscal year started October 1st, so the checks are really just getting cut now. We're just starting to see the impacts of the budget decisions that we made back in June. So the timing of this is really good. It's a good time for me to come and, and tell you what to be looked for, show you some of the priorities that we had in Lansing when we were setting the budget. I also want to explain that I serve on the Appropriations Committee in Lansing. So there are policy committees and appropriations committees. I do serve on tax policy. I think it's very important to be aware both of revenue in and revenue out. But appropriations is where I spend most of my time, making decisions about how we spend the state's money. Specifically, I serve on the subcommittees for Department of Health and Human Services, school aid, higher education. And then I chair a little committee called Joint Capital Outlet, which is a committee with the senators. We make recommendations about major higher ed infrastructure projects. So this is the budget that we recommended. We voted again on June, just going into effect now. So let's look at the presentation here. Key items in this year's budget. Okay, revenue sharing. I am very proud to come from local government. We need to prioritize local government and fund local governments. So we prioritize revenue sharing. We did a $75 million increase in revenue sharing for our local governments. And in addition to that, 75 million for our Public Safety and Violence Prevention Fund to meet every hometown's unique public safety needs. Go on to the next one. School aid, again, another one of my important subcommittees. I'll also say, this is my first meeting where I get to say I officially represent all of Berkeley. I have been serving for the past two years, but in a slightly different district where I represented about a third of Berkeley. The other two-thirds of Berkeley were represented by Regina Weiss. Regina Weiss and I both together represented Berkeley, and Regina Weiss was the chair of our school aid subcommittee. She's been serving on school aid for a long time. She was a high school English teacher in Detroit and prioritizing equitable funding for education. So I'm really proud to be supporting her on this committee and very proud of the budget that we passed. We freed up about 600 million for school districts by reducing their contribution rate into the state's retirement system. So that put money directly back into classrooms and teachers' paychecks. This also, by the way, is equivalent to about $420 per pupil for every Berkeley student in Berkeley schools. So while we didn't do a foundational increase directly, this, this indirectly led to about a 420 per pupil increase to the foundation allotment. We did 200 million to continue providing breakfast and lunch for all students. We started that two years ago. It was very popular, very much appreciated by our families, saving the average family $1,000 a year and just making everybody's lives simpler. Also, it helped reduce stigma, helped more kids who needed to be fed, to be fed in schools, and that helps with performance and everything we want out of school. So very proud of that program. 87 million to school districts to improve literacy learning. We committed, created a specific committee for literacy achievement, making sure that we're targeting that money and putting it into the programs and the classrooms that need it the most. $4 million to support school district partnerships with the Michigan Education Justice Coalition, implementing research and tools for addressing racial disparities in education. In this region, you might be familiar with 482 Forward. They're a very active Detroit regional organization that advocates for this work. Higher education. So this is all of the state-funded universities, colleges, and community colleges. So we, in Berkeley, we all live within Oakland County. We all live within that community college district. Higher education funding, we improved the successful Michigan Achievement Scholarship to allow funding for the cost of living to be separate from tuition, recognizing that the cost of attending is often beyond tuition. So we allocated our financial aid dollars in a way that federal money could then be used for those cost-of-living requirements that people have, covering childcare, transportation, housing when needed. The Community College Guarantee, this allows all high school and incoming college students in our district, as well as anybody in the state who lives in one of those community college districts who graduate high school after 2023, to attend community college tuition-free. And we also have other, the Reconnect Program, I'm going out of order now, but $52 million for the Michigan Reconnect Program also provides scholarships for individuals 25 or older. We moved the age on that to making sure that we're covering the first two years of community college for anyone who needs it and who qualifies. We did $20 million increase in funding for the Tuition Incentive Program. That opens doors to higher education training and credentials to more students. And again, we're thinking not just community college, but training programs as well. Okay, affordability. We allocated 100 million to increase the affordable housing supply. We know that housing, affordable housing is an issue across the state. This was a major priority for us. $5 million in ongoing support for those double-up food bucks, an increase of 3 million from the previous financial year, and we did extra funding for Meals on Wheels. The double-up food bucks program enables people who shop at farmers markets, and I know we have one here in Berkeley, to get twice the bang for their buck at the farmers markets to buy local food with their food assistance. That has also been an incredibly popular program. We expanded the Great Start Readiness Program. That offers free preschool for more eligible families, and we closed early gaps in educational opportunity, making sure it's more accessible and more available for more people. Public health, we are trying to address the nurse shortage. We did funds for a nursing school student loan repayment program, encouraging people to come and get their tuition paid back when they stay in Michigan and serve in the areas of highest need. We allocated 1.8 million in grants to community-based organizations that provide programming on new extreme risk protection orders and safe storage laws. So we passed three major bill packages to reduce gun violence. One was safe storage laws requiring guns to be locked, stored safely away from people who shouldn't have access to them, especially students. Even more recently than this slide was published, we set this in a statute, requiring school districts to educate families about those laws. And because we know that unfunded mandates won't be successful, we're putting the funding forth from the state to make sure that the school districts have the resources that they need to educate all of their families on those laws. We also, extremist protection orders, those, that's the package of laws that we did that enable law enforcement or family members to petition a court and have weapons temporarily removed from somebody who provides, who poses a risk to themselves or others. But our law enforcement needed to be educated, and so did our judges and our court system. So we provided the funding to help everybody get up to speed on the law and the best practices on how to enforce it. We also, the third one that didn't require as much education, but I also just want to mention while I'm here talking about reducing gun violence, we also passed universal background checks, requiring anybody who purchases a firearm in Michigan to go through a background check here in Michigan. Okay, and then we allocated 275,000 for mental health training in schools. Go on from there. Transportation, public transit, incredibly important to so many people, especially in this room. Grateful for your advocacy, Councilmember Gavin. We did 226 million toward local bus operations, investing in essential transportation services that make everyday commutes happen, and a $101 million increase for distribution to local road agencies. Making, we hear our governor talking about fixing those roads. We got to make sure that we're investing in our local roads as well as the roads that the state is directly responsible for. And the environment, 40.3 million to access available federal funding for lead service line replacement projects. That's another one that hits home in Berkeley, right? We know we have old infrastructure, many lead service lines. And this is more state funding to help communities access those federal funds and to get the money that they need to help fund those replacements. We did 25 million for local water infrastructure projects. Also, that helps municipalities take advantage of federal funding for those projects. And 30 million for electric vehicle charging stations and hydrogen fueling facilities that will help us grow our clean energy systems. Okay, labor and economic opportunity, 60 million for this new Michigan Innovation Fund that helps launch startups. Part of that, I'll get to in a moment, 45.5 million for workforce development and growth program grants across the state. And both of those programs do provide additional support for small and minority-owned businesses. That was an important priority for us. We also created a board that has requirements for retirement plans for all employers who currently do not provide a retirement plan for their employees, so small businesses who might not provide a retirement plan. Now we have requirements that they need to. It does not cost those businesses anything. And it's been incredibly popular with small businesses that this is directly connecting their employees to retirement plans, helping them, their employees plan for their futures. Agriculture, natural resources, $3 million for a new farm-to-family program that supports regenerative farming, agriculture supply chains, and the promotion of Michigan food products. We did 5 million from the USDA for animal disease prevention and response, specifically addressing and highlighting the pathogenic avian influenza in dairy cows and poultry. And we created the Land and Water Conservation Fund Program, and this again aids local governments in developing public recreation. Health and human and veteran services. We expanded the certified community behavioral health clinics to more counties. These provide mental health services to an estimated 35,000 additional individuals. We increased by 30.1 million, a support for child welfare programs, including adoption subsidies, foster care payments, and the Child Care Fund. And we allocated 2.5 million to continue to provide housing for homeless veterans and their families. All right, the information here, thank you, and the information here is my new information for my new office. I was House District 5, now I am House District 6. Just to confuse more Berkeley residents, Representative Weiss was House District 6, and now she's House District 5. But you can find us with a little Googling or the information here. This is now the up-to-date phone number. An email will be the same if you email me at my previous email before. That did not change, thank goodness. And I know that Rep. Weiss, I can speak on her behalf when it comes to this. She will always be a champion for Berkeley. She came from Oak Park City Council. She, like I, know the importance of supporting our small communities and local governments, and we're here to serve. So are there any questions from council about the presentation or anything else?
Well, first of all, thank you for being here. Thank you for taking the time to share this great information. And then, of course, for your hard work in Lansing and the leadership role you play not only in our community, but in Lansing as well. So are there any questions from council? Councilmember Baker.
Thanks, and I echo my colleagues' gratitude and appreciation for your time, your service, the information, and for continuing to promote what we know is an awesome community across the state. Thank you for that. I'm very excited about the various initiatives and programs that you've helped bring about or provide funding for. To what extent do you think that these will persist over some duration of time? You know, in case there's any changes in leadership or which way the wind blows and things like that, are these things that people can look forward to for the foreseeable future? Or do we think that, you know, just hit it while you can kind of deal? Anything that you care to share on, you know, the lifespan of these kinds of programs, which seem like they'll benefit residents in the state so, so very well?
That's a great question. That's an important question to be asking. These are, reflect many of the priorities that we've had in the Democratic trifecta over the last two years. And we've had a shift already in some of our leadership. The state House, where I have been serving in majority, now I will be serving in a Democratic minority. So it will be up to leaders like me, my other Democratic reps, to continue to fight for these priorities, to continue to make the case that they're important, that they're valuable, that they benefit our entire valuable, that they benefit our entire state. And I'm hoping that as these checks are being cut and then our communities are benefiting from them, that they will be sharing with all of their reps on both sides of the aisle how much they have benefited from these. That will help us continue to make the case that we should fund these important programs. That being said, I don't expect most of these to change immediately. We continue to have the same governor that we've had, she was not up for reelection. The Senate majority also continues to be Democratic. So whenever there's a budget negotiation to remove or add something to the overall budget, it needs to be made among all three, the House, the Senate, and the governor. That being said, the budget is where, if there's split power, as we're going into, often the minority party out of the three will use the budget as the biggest negotiating point. So it's going to be a lot of work, I think, to try to keep these priorities in there. And I just ask that residents from Berkeley and from all of the state, when you are seeing the benefits of these in your local roads, in your schools, in your healthcare system, you know, when affordable housing and the nursing issues are helped by the allocations that we've made, that you thank your representatives that fall for them and encourage those who maybe didn't vote on the budget, in support of the budget, you know, holding them accountable. That's the job ultimately of residents, is to let us know what you like and what you don't like about our decisions. It helps us keep on track.
Thank you. I know you're up for the challenge. I appreciate you being there to advocate on our behalf. Thank you.
Councilmember Black, any questions that you have?
No, I'm just very, very honored to see Representative Weiss in our state's committee for veterans. That's obviously a very special group. For me, as I am one, so just kudos to them for continuing to champion and support our vets.
If it's okay, I'd love to take a moment to uplift some legislation that I was personally fighting for that was not successful. I'm among friends, I feel like I could do that, and it's very much on topic, Councilmember Black, with what you were just saying. There are some things in the state budget that I feel are very against common sense that we, I think everybody would agree that we need to do better, and the way that we serve our veterans is one of them. Currently, veterans who are 100% disabled veterans and who are homeowners receive a tax credit every year equivalent to the amount of tax that they would pay for their home, which is great. I think we need to continue doing that. These are veterans who are 100% disabled, who made ultimate sacrifices for our country, and we have, as a society, made that decision to give them that tax credit, absolutely. Unfortunately, veterans who rent don't get that tax credit or any equivalent of that tax credit. So I had legislation and I was trying to negotiate for an appropriation that would have given an equivalent amount to the amount that is paid on the taxes of where that renter lives to them in their income tax, so it wouldn't need to go through the landlords to give them that equivalent tax credit. We know that as a whole, veterans who rent have more need than veterans who own their homes, and I think it's important that we're honoring them and their sacrifices and giving them that tax credit as well. So that's one of the things that I didn't get done the first two years, but I have every intent of sticking around for another decade and continuing to uplift those issues and fight for those needs.
Wonderful. Well, thank you. Well, if there are no other questions, just a heartfelt thank you again, Representative Price, for being here and sharing all this information and all the work you continue to do in Lansing.
Thank you.
Great. We've now reached the communication portion of tonight's agenda. Ms. Mitchell, who gets to go first tonight?
Councilmember Hennan.
All right.
From the Tree Board, we learned that, you know, through their work and through the DPW, we received a $4,000 grant that's going to allow us to plant an additional 30 trees this year. Just for a point of reference, we usually plant around 200 trees, so it's a sizable percentage over what we usually plant. And their next meeting is Monday, January 27th at 7:00 PM. Then the Zoning Board of Appeals has a case for a variance for a business on 12 Mile that wants a rear sign variance, and their meeting is on Monday, January 13th, also at 7:00 PM. And then I just want to hope everyone had a happy and hopeful holiday. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Baker?
Hey, that's me. Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick things. The Historical Committee meets next week's Tuesday, January 14th, at 7 o'clock. And if you'd like to learn more about the museum and Berkeley's history, find out more information, if you can't make it there in person, please go to berkeleyhistory.com. The DDA Board, our Downtown Development Authority, they have a board that helps administer the operations. They meet in two days' time, on Wednesday, January 8th, the fun start time of 8:15 in the morning. And for more information on what the DDA is preparing for the upcoming year, please visit them online at downtownberkeley.com. And finally, it was Hillary DiPiano who once said, "We all get the same 365 days. The only difference is what we do with them." And so as we start the new year, I just wanted to acknowledge that we've got a fresh deck of 255 cards to play with. We've used a couple already, which is pretty cool. And the way I'm thinking about it is to try to make each day something that I can be proud of. And so as you think about the days, I mean, these are precious commodities that we have. Time is scarce resource, so do what we can to be something that you can be proud of and look back on. Be sure to take time for yourself as well. I know we have lots of responsibilities and things that we're taking care of, but you matter too, so take time out for that. And as always, please hug somebody you love, they need it more than you think they do. With that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vellani?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Gavin. No updates from the Berkeley area chamber, given how recent our last meeting was. And just a reminder that the Environmental Advisory Committee will meet on January 16th at 6:30 PM on the second floor of the Public Safety Building.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Patterson?
Thank you. The Beautification Committee does not meet in December or Janu-- or it met in December, not January. Those 365 days, I'm counting backwards maybe, but we don't meet in January. And the Planning Commission will meet the 28th, but we'll have a meeting before then, so really nothing else.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Black?
Thank you. We are still very much looking for participation and-- You know, members for the Committee on Engagement in Technology, and again, I'm going to say it, I hear a lot of you are online and have strong and powerful voices. We need you on our committee. So looking forward to Director Flora putting out opportunities for people to apply. Want to again thank Director Price for her presentation and just, again, it warms my heart here on military service to see what we're doing with veterans. Last thing I want to say is, obviously, this month, we're going to have an inauguration, and I want to encourage people to certainly resist negativity and certainly resist violence wherever you may feel it or see it. And let's go into this new term, whether you're candidate one or not, let's go into this new era of leadership on a positive and productive note. That's all I have, Mayor Protem.
Thank you very much. City Manager, Ann Black?
Nothing tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. No legal report tonight.
Great, thank you. Well, very briefly from my end, the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee will meet February 13th at 7:00 PM at the Community Center, and the Library Board will meet January 15th at 7:00 PM at the library. So I'd like to echo my colleague just saying Happy New Year to everyone and looking forward to a prosperous 2025. So with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Vellani. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the rule?
Patterson?
Yes.
Vellani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes. The Monday, January 6th, 2025, meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned.
Nice job.